Cornwall Planning Board is now in session. We have, we have two members absent both, both Hilton and legitimate, as also to the board. I'd like to extend a gracious hello from former board member Philip Zoldo. He's moved on to higher things, that is chairman of the Cornwall Planning Board. That would be Philip's role in the board. He sends his best and master regards to all of us. Anybody get to read the minutes? Thanks to Fran. Everybody reading? Everybody liking? Anyone on motion to acceptance? Second? All of them there?
Aye.
Great. Move right along. Correspondence, I'll forward it over to you. You've got the full supply of them. No resolutions currently to be considered until after discussion, correct Dominic?
That's correct. But sir, on correspondence, I believe you had a letter request from Brad Schwartz regarding the Cornwall Commons bulk subdivision, for a six-month extension.
That's our favorite. For a Cornwall.
That's correct. I mean, this, just so the record is clear, this is for the ten lot subdivision of the Cornwall Commons site. It does not allow or permit any development to occur there. It is what's done as part of the original planned adult community, as well as the commercial projects that were planned there at that time. And the applicant has received a preliminary approval, which allows an extension every six months. So I believe that they've requested an extension, which the board could consider at this time.
Just for the record, that's a standard and really pro forma action on the part of the board, correct?
That's right. And they would have to come back before the board before proceeding with any form of project there, including finalizing that subdivision.
Okay. Are there any questions? As for motion to approve the extension, so move second?
Second.
All of them there?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, Dominic. Any discussion? No discussion. No public hearings this evening, so we can move right on to the subject of our agenda tonight, our hotel.
Good evening, Barbara. We're applicants to move on way up on the Dallas beach. We are here, the hotel, for the special permit for the site plan application. And I've been here now for three years and a few months. And we are, we are hoping, and we believe that we've covered all of the comments from, from the board and from its consultants. And we are looking to have, receive a copy of a resolution, a proposed resolution. And we're looking for a vote on that resolution.
Thank you. Kristen?
Sure. So last month, we talked a bit about restaurant seating. We've been talking about that for the last couple of appearances for this application. The board suggested last month that the applicant should reduce the total number of seats to reduce the overall amount of parking waiver that they would require, which they did. So the applicant has decreased the number of bar and restaurant seating from 118 to 112. So that now generates a parking demand of 100 total parking spaces, that being with the number of parking spaces required for the hotel itself, based on 70 parking spaces provided, with the 100 that's required. That leads to a 30% waiver, which is what this board issued back in July of 2024. So the applicant no longer requires an additional waiver amendment to that aspect of their approval. So otherwise, I don't have any other site plan comments, but I did prepare a negative declaration for this board's consideration.
Thank you, Kristen. And before we consider that waiver, would it show?
Sure. So just a couple, we had a few comments on very minor technical items with regards to the plans. I did note that the applicant provided the re-easements that are required for the site, that being for the dumpster, the shared parking, and the drainage, which were provided for Dominic's review, which should be included as a condition and is in your resolutions before this evening. The other two outside agency approvals that I keep bringing up every month is the Orange County DPDW and Village of Cornwall and Hudson Water Department review of those technical aspects, both of which have reviewed and provided conceptual approvals for those respective permits, but can be considered a condition of approval for the site plan. Otherwise, we, or I worked with Dominic and Kristen on both the revised deck and approval resolution and find it adequate for the season.
I'll adjust Dominic's resolution and ask for those to be incorporated into the resolution. I'm sure he's already done that, but we'll address that in a moment. I'll ask for individual comments from board members, if there are any. Mary Beth?
Yes, I do have a few questions, based on the resolution proposal. It's, I know that it's been made that due to inadequate parking for the site, that valet parking would be available for high volume in the evenings. While the valet may park some vehicles on the property, will the valet parking, be parking customers' cars on the public street?
Yes, I believe that Dr. Greeley had suggested that there is sufficient available parking further down Main Street, once you get past Willow, and that it would be mainly available for valet to park further down on Main Street, in addition to parking vehicles on-site as well. But that detail itself would be part of a protocol that would be submitted by the applicant that would need to be approved by the board at a later time, prior to the match actually opening.
Okay, because my question is actually, who retrieves the vehicles the next day when the valets are not on duty?
My expectation was that the valet parking was going to be used for restaurant events, rather than hotel guests. That was my understanding of it. So I think that, you know, if there was a Saturday night, Friday night, a busy time at the restaurant, and also at the hotel, is that parking on-site would be reserved for hotel guests, and valet parking would be made available for people that were going to the restaurant that also needed to park their vehicles. And so the expectation would be is that the valets themselves would be retrieving those vehicles on the same day that the event is happening.
That's my understanding of well.
Can I ask the follow-up question on that, Mary Beth?
Sure.
Not to put a crowbar in, but the, I believe the amended site and special permit approval has a mechanism for revisiting the valet parking, the effectiveness of that program. As, so as we watch it evolve, I think it's an important, and I don't know if I've seen that mechanism before, but certainly it's within the purview of this board to ask for a mechanism to review and, and look at the effectiveness of that program. Just, Chris, I think there is such a.
It's absolutely in the resolution. There has to be a post-opening report with monitoring that has to occur prior to six months after the facility is open, and then the board will review a report that has to be submitted, no later than one month after that. So essentially, seven months after opening. And you can evaluate the effectiveness. You can also require that monitoring be ongoing, so that you can continue to see how conditions evolve over time.
And for the record, I'm going to ask Dominic to provide an overview of each component of the resolution, so that those bases are covered.
Okay. But it is in there, to answer your question.
Mary Beth?
Because that was the question. A follow-up question that I had was, how do you address the two-hour parking restriction for customers' cars that would be left on Main Street? So I was just curious as to.
We'll have to see what they propose in their protocol.
Okay. And my other question, my last question for parking would be, and how are you addressing any overflow parking on a public street when the snow regulations are specifically stated at two inches that are in effect? So that was a question I had for any, any on-street parking.
Understood. We could ask them to address that in their protocol.
Okay. I do have a question in regard to, I know I've asked this question in the past, and I will continue to do so, in regard to irrevocable agreement with the other two property owners of Purdy's Lane, authorizing the hotel property owner to repair and maintain the section. And I know there's an easement, but again, my question is, what about putting that in with the deed?
It's in the resolution. It's a petition of, of the resolution that, that Purdy's Lane be maintained. It doesn't go with the deed.
I guess what I'm looking, my question would be, and if those property owners say, you're not coming on my property, what is the mechanism to solve that problem, that issue?
So this property has, as you mentioned, an easement to utilize and maintain in Purdy's Lane. And so if they need to do so, like there is, you know, the courts are an avenue for people looking to raise challenges as far as whether someone has the property rights that they believe that they have that are necessary. They have broadly worded property rights, in my opinion, to travel over Purdy's Lane and to make improvements to it. But if others feel that they do not, then that'll be something that they can litigate amongst themselves.
So while we're on Purdy's Lane, in the event that Main Street happens to be closed, how do fire trucks and emergency vehicles access the hotel property from Purdy's Lane, which is 12-foot wide pavement, and most likely probably a questionable base material? And I was wondering, how is that being addressed?
Mary Beth, can I ask a question on the chamber?
If Main Street is closed, and there is a fire in another building, in the area of Main Street that's closed, I think the same question rests to how do the, and I assume, and I don't mean to speak for the town yet, but I assume access would be granted, regardless of, you know, they would move the stuff on Main Street in order to access. I don't think it's particular to the hotel, that that issue would necessarily be raised. Because if it's closed, it would eventually, if there was a fire, it would be open.
I guess I'm, I guess I'm also questioning if you're going to have quite a bit of volume on a road that normally could not have that volume. That would be my other question. So I guess I'm looking as to, with the possibility, and I believe it was discussed, about having that road be brought up to TownSpecs to be able to be used.
Yeah. I mean, it's not being offered for dedication to the town, so it is private lane, you know.
Which at times has been required from even a private road standard. So I guess that's what I was looking at, to see if that's been considered, if it's.
Now, there's multiple owners, and there's also different uses. It would be.
Yeah, all the owners would have to get together and offer that for dedication. But in my opinion.
Because you do have private roads that have maintenance agreements within the town. So I guess that's.
Oh, absolutely. You know, but you also have private roads that don't have maintenance agreements as well, and this is one of them. The ones that predate, you know, the standard of practice of where a maintenance agreement, you know, would be, the reason why private roads now have maintenance agreements is to avoid the potential for disputes amongst neighbors. You know, someone says, I want to pave it, and I want you to pay your 20% to pave it, and, you know, and then, you know, there's a process and a mechanism that's in place. For older private roads, you don't have that, you know, and so it falls on, you know, a particular landowner to decide whether or not they want to make improvements to the private road, because they want to make improvements. And that's exactly the situation that we have here, where we have the hotel developer that is utilizing Purdy's Lane as part of their site plan approval, for a second means of access into the site, for emergency access and access in general, but primary access will be out the front. And it'll be on them to pay for improvements in maintaining Purdy's Lane, because their plan depends on.
And under the special use department, we end up with an actual maintenance plan for Purdy. As per now, where we have, nobody's doing anything. It's just an aspect there. And I think that, Dominic, and you can maybe help me understand Mary Beth's question as well, that the special use permit calls for the hotel operator to maintain Purdy's Lane as a passable lane, which exceeds what we have right now, which is, nobody is doing anything right there.
Yeah. I think he goes a step further and says the building inspector identifies a division Z, I should require them to repair it.
That's great. Okay.
That's great. We'll get to that, you know, when I go over the resolution.
And my other question is, the mountable curb, which is part of the sidewalk, so to speak, that's going to be constructed on the west side of the building, for the purpose of access to the main hotel restaurant, so to speak. My question is about the safe exiting of the building from the main entrance, what if there's an evacuation? Is there enough, you know, for 100 people or 200 building occupants to safely use that sidewalk that's now dedicated for a mountable curb? Is there enough area there to be able to address anyone that would be leaving the building for emergencies?
Are you asking me that question, Mary Beth?
I think I'm going to go around to it. Property owner and to Sean. I have one eye on Sean, and I have the property owner, so representative, or representative.
I don't think I understand the question.
I think you're asking, is there a sidewalk space to house all the people on the sidewalk?
Correct. You're asking me if that, when there's a truck on the sidewalk?
That is correct. When, when there has to be an emergency response, and the fire truck arrives.
So I don't believe the intent of the sidewalk is to house all the people that have to evacuate. The intent.
Because that's where the main entrance is, so that's why I was just looking at.
Right. That request for the mountable curb and sidewalk was to still meet the required 26-foot width for the fire lane, while providing more or less a visual and physical, I won't say barrier, but deterrent from people driving onto the sidewalk, to help protect the people exiting or entering the building from various cars entering the site.
The actual truck wouldn't be on the sidewalk. I think what you're talking about is the potential of an outrigger, which could be, could be on the, on one portion of the sidewalk, and it certainly wouldn't be blocking the main door. But you also have the doors in front for all the people to access on the Main Street. So, and there is enough, and then you have doors in the rear and the side. So even without those front doors, you have enough egress, in accordance with the code, for everybody to safely get out of the building. If, for some highly unlikely reason, that the outrigger was placed directly in front of that door, everyone could still egress the property.
And my last question, of course, and I know I've asked this question before, is in regard to the addition of the property parcel for the parking, for 17-space parking. And that parcel was not included in the original public hearing. I did receive the letter from the owner that actually states that there is a significant revision to the site plan, and the information, and the owner actually states that in his letter. So with that significant revision to the site plan, and not having included the 17-lot parking spaces for the property next door, I am also going to request a new public hearing be held on that parcel, and based on those two reasons. And I would like the board to consider that. I know that in the resolution, it does state that there would be consideration of a waiver, but at this time, I would ask the board for that. The other thing I would also just mention is, I know that we did mention about a 30-day occupancy, and after speaking with other contractors for emergency housing and residence, I would ask that the board also consider 12 days. I know I had mentioned that in the beginning, for consideration, we need the board to agree on 30 days, but I would also ask for additional consideration of it being 12 days for occupancy with the hotel.
Mary Beth, I'll refer to Dominic.
Yeah, the last point, the easier one. I'll take that first. So it's, the 30-day stay is tied to the New York State Building Code, which defines transient stays as being 30 days or less. And this is a hotel, hotels are meant for transient stays, they're not meant for permanent occupancy. And so the resolution does contain a restriction, and it's been noted on the site plan, that the stays can be for no longer than 30 days. And that's consistent throughout the state. If the board wanted to impose a different, or shorter length of time, I think that you would need to provide a reasonable and rational basis in order to do so. Because I think you would open yourselves up to a claim that you're being arbitrary and capricious for a shorter stay, unless there was a really good reason to do that.
We would object to that. It's not, it's also something that, you know, we, we are here with a soft branded Hilton, and that's something that would be problematic for that as well.
Dominic, from a point of view of a board vote on that, that would require a majority vote of the president of the board?
It would require a majority vote of the board, of all of them. So, so any action that the board would take tonight would be needed, there needs to be four votes, the majority of the board that needs to act, rather than a majority of those presidents.
We'll have discussion on that then. Mary Beth, any additional?
If I may, you know, so in regards to the public hearing, this obviously topic has been covered, you know, previously. I'm happy to go over it again. The board did have a public hearing on the project. The project at that point, you know, was the hotel and the restaurant. There was an increase in the amount of seating that was proposed later on. And there was also, obviously, this new lot that was brought in. There were some discussions early on about that lot possibly being used for parking for the hotel, but the application was amended as part of this latest submission, although the plans had shown for two months now, the provision of parking on what I'm going to call Lot 2.12, which is the separate lot, and that's the one with the 17 spaces. And that was added to offset the increase in capacity within the restaurant. I've provided this advice, and of course, the board is, you, what I do is I provide advice, and the boards makes decisions. So however you want to proceed, you can proceed. I have advised you that the provisions of the Town and Cornwall Zoning Code, as it relates to site plans, provides for a single public hearing, doesn't say multiple public hearings. And there has been a public hearing on the hotel and on the restaurant. There now is before you an amended site plan application for Lot 2.12, which is adding additional parking on the lot that has capacity for that additional parking. And I did prepare the resolution, and I prepared it suggesting that the board waive that public hearing. Now, bear in mind, if you were to have a public hearing, that public hearing, in my opinion, would only be related to the parking on Lot 2.12, because you've already had a public hearing on the hotel and the restaurant. But, you know, and the question would be, what are the impacts associated with parking on that lot? Kristen has prepared an amended negative declaration, which covers that lot as well. And I would suggest that we go forward with considering that. But of course, whatever the board decides to do, if you want to have a second public hearing, my suggestion would be is that the public hearing would be limited to Lot 2.12, and the question is whether or not parking should be allowed on that lot. Bear in mind that the code does provide that parking is an allowable accessory use on that lot, and that the public hearing is waivable. That's how I wrote it and the rest.
Thank you, Dominic.
I did see that. I just know that from the legal notice that was sent out, this lot was not included in that. And again, I'm just quoting the owner's letter of significant changes and that, and revisions, and that we should be hearing from the public on that. There's been a total change in the project from when the public came to us. And if there's a issue about setting a precedent, I would want the precedent to be that if there is preliminary approval given for any property, any project, that it should be that a developer is not going to come in after that public hearing, and the public has been heard, and that we should be setting a precedent not to say, oh my gosh, we wouldn't do that for all projects. No, we should do that for all projects. It should be that if changes are made, significant changes are made, additional lots are added, there should be a new public hearing, and we should be hearing from the public and our residents.
Mary Beth, I'd like you to adjust the board for change to that, if the board is to consider it. But thank you. Amy?
So I just have one comment, and I just wanted to make sure, so the total seating includes outdoor seating?
Yes.
Okay, so that's seasonal seating, correct? So I think that the traffic study, I really like the idea of the valet, if that could also make sure that it includes sort of the summer warmer months, so that we can have an accurate picture of, you know, any kind of traffic issues, but also if it could include, I'm hoping that this brings a lot of pedestrians that want to come sit in the outdoor area, so if it can also include some kind of study on, you know, pedestrian traffic as well, just if that could be included.
Yeah, I would imagine they're going to review the parking and its occupancy, and if there's more pedestrian traffic, it's, there's going to be less.
They need to do additional crosswalks.
Yeah. Clearly, we are, comply with the town's wishes with the parking protocols and with the study as to once it's open. And I would, I would just say that this hotel has been the same height, same size, the same number of rooms, the restaurant has been the same size. The only change is that there is more seats. And I don't believe that to be a material change. And the applicant will object to an additional public hearing.
John? May I ask you any?
No.
Thank you.
They do agree with Mary Beth's point that one person in our receding, that we can add lots to applications, right? If Treetop came through and added more lots, if the Asian Woods came and added new lots, would we be having the same conversations?
I would say that for parking purposes, and particularly the way your, your code reads, right, you have in every, almost every municipality I've ever worked in, if there's an adjacent property, they allow that by lease, by license, by agreement or anything to be added into that, and you never have to add that parcel in. And I've never seen somebody go back to public hearing. And I've, I've been in front of 70 or 80 different planning boards, and for parking on adjacent, it's not a material change. It's something, it's, it's something you see all the time. It's a public lot, it's another private lot, it's a lease agreement, it's something else to help the project. It doesn't change the nature of the property. nature of the project. So it's just my experience.
John, you have other questions?
No, but I guess Dominic stated there, the planning board would have to waive the public hearing on Lot 2.12.
Yes, sir. That is how I approached it in the resolution.
Dominic, is that separable from the resolution? Two votes or is it a single vote on the resolution?
I mean, I prepared draft. We can back it up that way, but you want, you know, so it's just my draft.
So my, number one, I wanted to say thanks. I think those mountable curbs are gonna work great. I think it's a, I think it's a nice improvement. It's what we use at our own, you know, interesting circle there. And it seems to, it seems to do a good job of keeping people off the grass and off the gardeners as they're working inside of that space. That's also a mountable curb and I think a good, it's a good improvement. I also saw that our supervisors here this evening, John, thank you for attending. And I would point out as part of this that we may see increased pedestrian flow as Amy. And I both hope for as part of this project, it might, and it's not on this project, but it's worth stating, since there's a lot of public interest in the project, that some improvement of pedestrian throw, pedestrian flow throughout our municipal space, all the way, I would say, from in front of the Quaker Meeting House through to the, through to the, to Town Hall right here. It would make sense that we're making sure people can connect. So if someone wanted to use, if somebody wanted to use one of the restaurants at Cornwall Plaza, rather than using the restaurant in the hotel, not, not to say the hotel restaurant won't be great, but if there was somebody staying in the hotel who wanted to walk over to Leo's, they could do that safely. And the circle poses some special challenges for us in terms of pedestrians understanding that flow. And it just, it would be a good idea for us to keep an eye on that going forward, especially with the new bridge being finished. So I think it's, I think that there's a chance for overall improvement of pedestrian flow through our, through our municipality. The second thing is that the landscape plan doesn't, as near as I can tell, doesn't call out specific varieties in all cases. I just want to make sure that we're not inviting any invasive species. You've heard from me before on this, on this board, that we're not bringing any Bradford pears, Japanese barberry, that kind of thing. And so I'd ask, I'd ask for the, for the landscaping plan to contain a little more detail, not necessarily through this part of the process. But Kristin, if you could work with the applicant going forward and the building inspector's office to make sure that whatever plantings are being selected are not invasive.
No Bradford pears.
Dominic, the applicant is happy to have Dominic help with the resolution to include that there be no invasive species as defined by New York City.
That's great. I mean, we did the same thing on the golf course adjacent when we got a crack at that thing. And I think that's gonna be wonderful. I've observed some really, some really negative impacts from Bradford pears, particularly just south of us. And as the climate continues to warm, we can expect that same problem here. Bradford pears are really a horrible invasive. The last thing is I wanted, Mr. Chairman, to acknowledge that we had received a notification of a brownfield, a brownfield redevelopment application. So there are, and it's related to this site. The, that's good news for us. If there is in fact any, any environmental trouble on the site, that's been carefully covered inside the, inside the special permit approval. That's been called out specifically. Specifically, the applicant's gonna have to inform the town, not just the D E C in the event that anything's found on the site. And I just think that that, that combination could get this site properly developed in the end. And I think that's a, I think that's a very positive thing.
Thank you.
So let's see, mountable curbs, Bradford pears, supervisor. Yep, I said everything I meant to say.
Okay. With, with that, I'd like to ask Dominic a procedural question first. Dominic, in order to bring a revision or a resolution such as the public hearing resolution to the floor, does that require a majority of voters present to bring it to the floor? I believe our procedure is a majority of the board.
Is to bring a resolution to the floor.
There should be a motion in the second. And then there would need to be four votes by the board in order to carry and require a second public hearing.
The majority vote on part of the board present, I'm sorry, four votes in order to hold a public hearing, correct? Okay. With that, I certainly could, we could present that as a vote to the board. But I would like to add, with regard to that parking issue, that if there were a public hearing to be held, it would be strictly on the parcel that we're talking about.
Well, that would be my first. I mean, certainly that would be the notice. You know, I think that the only way you could proceed would be a notice of regarding the amendment. And the amendment is just for Lot 2.12. And that is just for the accessory parking on Lot 2.12. Now, of course, you know, the public can always get up and say whatever it is that they want, you know.
Stop the chirping.
Not for murder of the public.
But on that point, you know, the board, you know, has been consistent, you know, with its standard practice. It has never rejected, never rejected any kind of written comment that has been made, including throughout this process. And so there have been a number of, you know, letters that the board has received. And I'm sure that you've taken it into consideration, you know, the comments that have been made there.
Even anonymous comments, which boards, most boards reject.
Right. Well, the, what I want to refer to though is the, a little bit of history on the parking situation. I, everyone, I'll finish, but everyone does recall that at one point, there was a request to the board to waive the original 30% permit parking and allow for 100% parking in an attempt to accommodate the hotel. There was a lot of public feedback privately on that. I received 50 letters on it. That was in an attempt by the hotel to accommodate what was the parking requirement of the hotel.
On that point, you know, just so that everyone is clear is that the town board did change the code to provide that an applicant would be entitled to up to a 100% waiver. And that is not what the applicant is requesting. They are consistent within the 30% waiver, which was granted under the old version of the town code.
Right. Now they are. And I view-
But, but you think, put that out if you would.
Okay.
You know, is, is that, you know, like if they had demonstrated that there was plenty of on-street parking for this hotel, they could have asked for a 100% waiver.
Right.
And not have any parking on the actual site.
Right. Precisely. Though, to my point, that the addition of this lot that we're disputing, we're discussing, it was an attempt by the hotel to accommodate what was required and to alleviate the issue of having to request a 100% waiver. So in my, my personal view of that, I'm speaking as a member of the board, the attempt to accommodate more than, more than exceeds the drawbacks of using existing space for parking. It doesn't make sense. It seems as though, and I fear that maybe I'm not saying, suggesting, Mary Beth, that is you. But I'm suggesting that it, we shouldn't be viewed as trying to extend the deliberation on a project over a site that is designated for parking. It has nothing to do with the overall project, but rather simply the parking lot. And I personally, in terms of considering a vote to bring it to the floor, I would object to that myself. But I'm one vote. But I just, I just want to make sure that that's clear for my position. I don't think that we should prolong a project over that argument. My, that's my position.
And I'm actually looking at the entire project. Yes, we're gonna add an additional lot, but significant changes. Everything from the facade, people came, they had, they looked at what they spoke about. And even the front facade has changed.
Excuse me.
So I guess that's what I'm looking at. I just wanted to say that I'm not just-
Okay. But I want to make it perfectly clear that the discussion related to the public hearing is related to one specific lot and does not include the hotel.
I would ask for it to include everything.
Well, that-
Because now it's a change. I do have a question though. And my question is, what precedence do we have and what projects can I be advised about that where a preliminary approval has been granted in the Town of Cornwall? I, I've been with the town for many years and I don't remember, I cannot recall what projects in this town have had a preliminary approval granted by the planning board, where a public hearing would have been set and a vote taken.
If I might, I've been on the planning board for 33 years. And to my memory, which I suspect you'd be questioning, but I've never had the occasion to have a second public hearing in a given project.
I guess I was looking for what projects have been granted with preliminary approval.
I'm not sure. There are two questions there. One is whether there's ever been a second public hearing. And two, whether there's been a preliminary-
Approval granted on a project.
Our institutional memory bank will have to answer that question.
So the preliminary approval on this project was granted after the public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
And after the board adopted a negative declaration on, on the project. Preliminary approval, you know, is, is most commonly seen in connection with subdivisions. Because, you know, with subdivisions, you need, you have projects that often require additional approvals from outside agencies such as the Department of Health, there is the Department of Transportation, depending on the location, and other approvals that needed to be granted. My recommendation to the board in this particular project was is that because that there were other approvals that were needed, including from the village of Cornwall on Hudson, as well as the, yeah, the DP, that's right, the county D P W, that the board consider granting preliminary approval for this project, which you did.
So they can proceed with additional review.
That's correct.
With additional level of review.
Correct. Let's, let's those agencies know that the project has proceeded to a certain point where they could consider, you know, you know, rather than waiting and needing to see a project have that final approval. And so it says that the project has reached a certain stage that it warrants their outside agency input at that time.
Sorry? Okay. Well, with that, I'll ask for a motion to consider a second public hearing, if that's appropriate, Dominic.
Well, I think some, I mean, if someone wants to do it, they should make the motion.
Yes.
And then there needs to be a second.
Right.
And if there's no second, then the motion fails. If there's a second, then you take a vote.
Okay. And then the vote must be four votes. Okay?
And I'll make the motion that we hold the public hearing. And in my motion, it's for both parcels.
Over both? Or I'd ask for a legal opinion on that, Dominic.
I gave my legal opinion, but you know, I, once again, I, I mean, if I may, I provide advice to the board. The board can, is free to do what it likes.
Okay.
Mary Beth, there will be your second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is seated. Okay. With that.
With that, I think the next procedural thing for the board to consider would be the amended negative declaration that Kristin prepared. If you'd like to go over that, I think.
Could you, Kristin, would you kind of go over the negative?
So this is amended negative declaration because, as you know, this board adopted one in July of 2024. And then this, and then with the plan changes, the board asked for some additional, additional sort of revisions to studies that were prepared. And so this negative declaration kind of summarizes the initial studies that were done and additional information that the applicant provided. So it's much, it's very similar to the last one, except this has the additional information about the seating and the traffic, water, sewer, and the visual analysis that was done. So if you have any questions about a particular area of impact, I can go over that.
Okay. Did a great job, Kristin. Are there any questions, Mary Beth?
No.
What?
No.
No questions. Okay.
Now, if you would, consider a motion to adopt the amended negative declaration.
Okay. I'm, I'm asking for a motion to adopt the negative, amended negative declaration. So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye abstained.
Four yes, one abstention. Okay. With, with that, I can move to the resolution.
I would just pardon the interruption. I wanted to confirm the resolution, the voting on the resolution, is it a majority of the board or majority of the board present?
It's a majority of the board. It's always a majority of the board.
So I would like to request that we adjourn the vote until we have a full board.
Talk to the board. You know, I mean, I think you just, you can make a motion to adjourn because that would be the next step. You don't have any other business tonight. So the applicant is requesting that they want the opportunity to address the full board with the merits of the project. And it's a reasonable request. The question is whether or not you want to accommodate that. And you can simply move to adjourn the meeting, in which case this matter will be placed on next month's agenda.
Okay. I consider that a legitimate request. And I'll ask for comments on the board. Mary Beth? Amy? John? What?
If the applicant wants to defer, we should defer.
At the request of the applicant, I'll ask for a motion and vote. Motion to, to adjourn the meeting and consider the resolution at the next meeting. The motion?
So moved?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Vote to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Adjourn. Second? Again, I'm not, I think we are adjourned.
I think we adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.